Everybody that's coming. Tonight, just to give you a little timetable on tonight's meetings and so that we understand, the Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District, we're having a public hearing for that, which is basically just to talk about the budget which Laura will present. And then, right after that, we'll have the annual meeting of the Inland Lakes. And then, after that, we have a public hearing. This is a Jarrett public hearing, so we'll do that. And then, after that, we'll do, start the regular council meeting. So, we should be, and then, also, don't forget that we have a committee of the whole meeting that happens after the regular council meeting. So, let's begin, then, with the Inland Lakes Public Hearing. I'll call that Public Hearing to Order. The purpose is to discuss the budget as we have it on here. Sorry, I should be the one ready, right? So, you can see the budget that you received. What happened to the TVs? Okay, so, going back to Inland Lakes, we have a public hearing. And this has to do with the budget. And so, as a public hearing, we just take testimony in favor of the budget for 2025. And we'll also take testimony in opposition. So, at this time, we'll take testimony in favor of the proposed budget. If you'd like to make comments on that, step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Any testimony in favor? A hearing none, we'll go to testimony in opposition. Is there any testimony in opposition to the proposed budget? Any testimony in opposition? Hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed at 6:02 PM. Next up, then, we'll do the Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation Annual District Meeting. I will call this meeting to order. And Barb, you want to just take a roll real quick here for us?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan? Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel? Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker? Seven present, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Barb. We have an agenda in front of you, pretty short, but we have an agenda. We would need a motion from one of the commissioners to approve that agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Olson, second by, I'm sorry, Martin, that we approve the agenda for the Inland Lakes Protection. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We have minutes from last year's, and you can see that in your packet. It's on page, page two of your packet, starts on page two of your Inland Lakes package. Again, we would just be looking for a motion to approve these so we could place them on file.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the minutes of last year's meeting, which was actually held on November 7th of 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, we have Resolution Number IL-53, and as I said, that you can find that on page five of your packet. And basically, it is just the budget for 2025. And Laura is ready to make that presentation.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So, we both have an inland waters and a Friends of Meereen Shadow Lake group that meet throughout the year. And a few of the things that we've been working on in 2024 is continuing to decrease the sand that's blowing into our channel between Meereen and Shadow Lake. And so, we're coming up with plans for that, which may include planting native plants along the channel's edge to decrease the amount of wind that blows in and is pushed in by human interaction. We had a goose roundup where we collected 22 geese. We held an educational session on invasive cattails. We are keeping our eyes on fish sticks, and if the ice is thick enough this year, we will probably investigate putting more of those in. And I've already talked to the DNR about that. One of the concerns that our neighbors have is that there's an uptick in fireworks and firework trash in our Meereen Shadow Lake. So, I've talked to the chief about that. So, we'll keep an eye on that for next year as well. We've also, not we, but an emergency plan has been developed for the dams. So, we'll be looking into that in the future for our Inland Lakes Committee. We had a lot of water testing done this year, and we'll continue to do that. We started E. coli testing at the beach, and so far, our beach numbers have looked outstanding, which is really great. And with the water samples, the goose roundup, and the point intercept survey that we conducted to be in compliance with our water management, lake management plan, we have a total of $9,000, about $9,400 that we spent this year. So, if you look at the budget that has been accounted for in the middle of that page, you'll see that we have a 2023 actual. I want to point out the estimated balance on hand, which is the very bottom right figure of $35,944. That is our actual fund budget for inland lakes. And you can see that below 2024, we have an estimated $35,744. We will have more than that estimate because we did not go over budget. And so, we are requesting once again to have the $10,000 brought in through property tax revenue so that we can continue to monitor our lakes, possibly do another goose roundup. The fish sticks might cost some money, and then, continue to work on the channel, and anything else that comes up throughout the year.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions? I just want to, and I say this every year, but just so that we understand this, a few years ago, we put this on the tax roll, and we came up with a number of $10,000, which seems like it's a number that we are right around for expenses every year. Our options really are to either tax for this up to the $10,000, that's the max that we could do, or none. The only thing that happens, though, if we decide to do none, then next year's budgeted amount would also be none. So, once we go to that dollar amount, we, you know, let's say that we decide to cut it in half, so it's $5,000 for 2025, then the max that we could do the following year is the $5,000. So, we have to make sure that we stay with that number. Okay? And again, it seems like it's a good working number for us. Anybody else have any questions? So, what we'd be looking for is a motion to approve the Resolution Number IL-53, which is actually the 2025 budget. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Dykstra, that we approve Resolution Number IL-53, Inland Lakes 53. Any further discussion? If not, Barb will call a roll.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right, and then, we would need a motion to adjourn this Inland Lakes Annual Meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dykstra, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, next up, you guys need a break yet? Are we okay? All right. Next up is the public hearing. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code, and I'll call this public hearing to order. And before we take testimony, I'll ask whatever your name is, Jarrett, to explain to us. Good thing you have a name tag there.
Hey, not a problem. Thank you, Mayor. So, the public ordinance, public notice does start on page two. There's the ordinance on page three, and a red line on page four of your packets, and for those viewing the packets. Fairly simple change. There's a recommended change for the street yard setback, changing it from 20 feet to 15 feet. This is for a couple of reasons. It was brought up as a topic of conversation from a few different businesses or landowners that are zoned in the B1 district, which is what this change is referring to. It also came up in a discussion as a part of the Churchill Street Corridor Plan. Quite a few of those businesses are, or parcels are B1. And we really looked at how we wanted to structure Churchill and, you know, the walkability, kind of how the Dollar Store currently is, a little bit closer to the road, just promoting more pedestrian-friendly parcels and layouts. So, the recommended change is switching the 20 feet to 15. This also goes in line with what the rear setback is, which is how most of our districts are set up to have the same rear and front or street yard setbacks. So, happy to take any questions when that time comes.
All right, thank you, Jarrett. So, at this time, we take testimony in favor of the ordinance change. If you'd like to make comments or give testimony in favor, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Hearing none, any testimony in opposition to this ordinance change? Any testimony in opposition? Again, hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:11 PM. All right, next up is our regular scheduled city council meeting. I'll call that meeting to order, and we'll begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Barb, you want to read the court's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll for us?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan? Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel? Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
And Henry Velicker. Seven present, we have a quorum.
Okay, and Barb, you want to also start the introduction of the department heads?
Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hosele, Chief of Police.
Thanks, Brian. And of course, Josh is in the back room, operating the cameras and so on, so. We have, next up, we have the consent agenda. This is for items that we just take with one motion unless council member or staff would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda. Anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Olson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, regular agenda. Again, there are no additions to that. We would be just looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, we have four certificates of appreciation here tonight, and three out of the four are here tonight, so that's pretty awesome. We have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Mark Nolenberg for his 40 years of service to the city of Opeka. Pretty awesome. I have a certificate here for Mark. Justin, you want to, you want to grab it?
I think Mark should.
Come on up, Mark. It's up to you.
Mark's going to give a speech.
I do want to tell you too that I don't know when the last time we've had somebody that's 40 years, but he does have a $300 chamber gift certificates that goes along with his 30 years of service. So, that's pretty cool. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you.
No speech tonight. We did it five years ago. The night before, we gave him a break, so.
Yeah.
We did a significant speech.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for coming tonight, too. Appreciate that. All right, next up, we have Jan Popple, who has 20 years at the library, and she's not here tonight, but Eric, if you would, would you get that to her also?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And we have another one in the Street Department, actually, this time, and that's Tegan Nolter, who has five years. Tegan, you want to come on up? Hard to believe you have five already, too. Yeah, there you go. Tegan, thanks, yeah, thanks for coming tonight.
There you go.
Yeah, does he want to give a speech? All right, well, thanks a lot. And we have one last one here. So, we have a certificate of appreciation to Aaron Johnson for his five years of service to the city. I'm guessing this is his five years just as a city administrator and does not count his Parks and Rec years, but yeah. Aaron, yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have to listen to a speech from you, or?
You guys listen to me enough.
All right. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Next, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Public input. Is there any public input? I always think when we bring, when they show up, we should do something like pictures or something like that, but I didn't really think about it until they started walking up. Yeah. Okay, no public input, let's go to new business. We have a request, we're going to empty out the audience here real quick. Request for the use of city property and street closures for the Yuletide celebration. And we have Jeff Anderson, the new president, CEO of Opeka Chamber of Commerce.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Council members and city staff here tonight on behalf of the Opeka Area Arts and Culture Network with a request for city, use of city property, parking restrictions, and a few road closures for the 2024 Yuletide Celebration events. We've met with some city staff, Chief Hosele, and also Fire Chief Jake Waller to discuss these items. And in the past, or last year, I guess, the group brought these two as individual requests, so our goal was to try to put this all together. So, hopefully, I made some sense of it here with the request in front of you. What we're looking for is, first, for the Artful Trees, the Opeka Community Arts Board is doing the Artful Trees again this year, and they'd like to use City Square property to do that. 12 businesses decorating trees there beginning November 29th, and they would be on display through January 3rd, is my understanding. So, again, it's the same as last year on the sidewalk right out in front of the library in City Hall. Then, for the parade, we're changing things a little bit this year. Rather than starting at South Park and making the journey all the way to Danes Hall, we're going to start at Trinity and cut over on Badger and just make the four blocks of Main Street, the parade route. What we're looking for there is some temporary road closures. Again, like I said, as we discussed with the chiefs, road closures for the safe travel of the parade at that point in time, through the streets. The parking would be, we'd ask for parking restrictions on the north two blocks, so from Fulton to Granite Street, to, obviously. Look out for the safety of the kids going down the parade route. There was an issue last year with a car moving out into the parade route, and so we want to make sure we, obviously, make sure everyone's safe along the route. In preparation for the parade, we'd ask to close just one block of Jefferson from Gear to Badger, just so we can do some staging there between the Chamber Parking Lot and Trinity. And then, like I said, closure of Badger and Main, and then, part of Water Street, and parking restrictions along Water Street so that the parade can, or the parade attendees or, I'm sorry, entries can park after the parade and come back for the tree lighting at Danes Hall. And then, also, along with this, something I'd like to try, obviously, I'm sure you hear about it sometimes, the city council members, when we close the road and close parking, some business owners have concerns about the ability to do business during those hours. So, what I would like to do, with your permission, is just to limit the, let's see, the western side of East Fulton Street, the parking spots there, post them as business patron parking only, no parade attendee parking. Whether or not it will have an impact, I'm not sure, but it would be a way we could try to allow parking for those businesses that have concerns at times when we limit parking. And then, for the cookie walk on Saturday morning, December 12th, same as last year, from 8:00 to 4:30, closing off parking for those 12 spots you see on the map there on East Fulton Street for the trolley parking that will take people from downtown out to King throughout the day. So, that's our request today for the 2024 Yuletide Celebration events.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions of Jeff? Again, this is mainly for the street closures and special parking for people downtown. If you're okay with that, we would be looking for a motion to approve the request.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Dykstra, that we approve the street closures that Mr. Anderson has listed for us. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Good luck, Jeff. It was, I think last year was really the first year, right? And it was an awesome turnout, so we're looking for even better this year.
That's what we're here for. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks. Next up, we have ordinance number 10-2024. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 17.131, parent three, the B1 Neighborhood Business District Dimensional Standards Zoning Code. And this is just the first reading here, but Jarrett, I know you did this already, but can you just do a real quick explanation?
Of course. This one starts on page 42 of your packets. There is a red line on 43 that highlights the change. And the change is to the street yard setbacks for all structures, and the change is going from 20 feet currently to 15 feet, so a reduction of by five feet. This matches the rear yard setback. This also better matches the intent of the B1 Neighborhood Business District, which is meant to be more walkable neighborhood, community, pedestrian-oriented. So, having the buildings come closer to the streets, you know, closer to the sidewalk, easier to get to, it just feels more walkable. So, yeah, I guess that's the gist of it. Happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Jarrett, I have to tell you, I really appreciate, you know, putting the ordinance that we're going to vote on at the next meeting, but also, I like that you put in the red line version of that, too, so that we know what the changes are that are being made. It's very helpful. Well, thank you. All right, again, that was just the first hearing of that, so we'll be talking about that at our next meeting. Let's go next to, this is Stormwater Easement Agreement with River North Ridge LLC. And Justin, this is all you.
Thank you, Mayor. That starts on page 44 of the packet with my memo. This is the vacant, currently the vacant land south of Godfrey, where the new apartment complex is proposed to be built. This is just east of the existing Go Right Way site. Sheet 45 shows an aerial. If you could go there, please, Aaron, so I can describe this a little better. We have an existing pond there right now that captures the stormwater from the streets, Godfrey and Industrial. There's two stormwater pipes that go underground from our inlets to this pond, and that is the treatment for that area. With the apartment complex going on this site, that pond will be expanded, so it'll handle our public stormwater, but then also the stormwater generated from these new apartment complexes and the parking lots, et cetera. So, it'll be made bigger, but it's serving multiple purposes. It'll be more of a regional stormwater pond. It is currently ours. We'd like to keep it ours because it is handling the public right of way, and as such, that's what this easement is doing. So, the property will be turning over to the developers, but we would need this easement back so that we can ensure we maintain this, the pipes and the pond itself. And not just what is shown here, what it's going to be made into. So, this is kind of a trade-off agreement, but again, we do need to keep this to ensure we are staying within DNR standards and, I guess, keeping our waters clean. The plan for the apartments is below, is a little further down. If you're good at reading topo lines, you can see the change. Page 56 and 58 show the old pond, and then show the new pond kind of over the top of it. You can see it's getting significantly bigger, about a third. And again, that is sized appropriately to handle both the public and that private water. So, we have a couple other regional quote-unquote stormwater ponds. We did this out in East Gate area, it's very same thing. It helps with this development and then also future development, so. The terms of the easement are pretty straightforward. It allows us access in, allows us to maintain, we have to fix what we wreck, but they cannot deny us our responsibilities, so. So, with that, I guess I'm looking for approval to execute this agreement. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Anybody have any questions? All right, as Justin has suggested, we would need a motion to approve this easement agreement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve the stormwater easement agreements with River North Ridge LLC. Any discussion? Barb will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thanks. You're still up here, though. We have a state municipal agreement, which is abbreviated SMA, Review and Action. So, there are three different ones here. Justin, I know you have this all-in-one memo, but can we do these one at a time?
Sure.
Does that work for you?
Sure. Well, I was going to, okay, yes, I have it broken down. I tried to do the best I could to keep them straight. SMA, and there's three of them, one, two, and three. I have a map that I probably want to reference the most. So, the very, we'll start with the first one. So, SMA one is Fulton Street, or what we've been calling Fulton Street. So, this is from Hillcrest. is from Hillcrest to Main. This is LRIP, or Local Road Improvement Program. And this is the one that we, that Aaron has mentioned before, scored number one in the state. It was highly competitive and it is a fifty-fifty match. So this is the project that we've had on our plan for quite a number of years. We plan to extend some of the downtown amenities further west, but then, of course, just continue on with improving one of our highest trafficked roads in the city. This one, like I said, is a fifty-fifty. We're assuming the cost for this project, much like Main Street, is going to be fairly significant, well over four million dollars when it's all said and done. Being that it is fifty-fifty, the DOT's share is just over two million dollars, and that is for construction items. That is your standard construction items for roadway, storm sewer, sidewalk. They will add lighting and restoration. If you remember, Main Street, you know, our share is usually a little bit higher than that because we pay a hundred percent for design work, community engagement, and then any non-standard WISDOT items, which can be the aesthetic type of pavements, aesthetic lighting, or anything else that is just not a roadway item, such as sewer and water. So our bill usually does kind of creep up and is not a true fifty-fifty, but it's two million dollars and it's a really good benefit for the city. We are looking at, once this is executed and started, and of course, we got to get through budget season, this winter time, we will put together a RFP, or Request for Proposals, where we'll start seeking engineers and architects to help us start with the planning and designing of West Fulton Street. We'll start that in 2025, continue into 2026, and then hopefully with a construction of 2027. The sunset date on this SMA is in 2029, so we do have about a year and a half buffer built in to that. So if something were to happen as, as far as like design standards or the unexpected, we would have the option to kind of push that back if we wanted to. If we go into this agreement and then decide later on, we don't want to move forward with this project, we can back out. We just need to reimburse the DOT, Wisconsin DOT, whatever expenses that they have.
That they have.
So the risk there, I would say, is fairly low, since we're pretty sure we want Fulton Street to happen. And we've been through a very similar process with Main Street, so we feel pretty confident that we can execute this project and make it efficient in the next few years. So with that, the first action is to go in agreement with the DOT. The project ID is three nine five zero eight eight zero two five one twelve. You may choose to repeat that if you want. And the action I have in there is for funds to cover a minimum of two million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. That is as stated.
That is as stated.
In the SMA.
In the SMA.
And that is our share.
Sorry, Justin. Paul Hagan, welcome. Glad to see it. It worked out. I am going to mute you, just because we're getting some feedback, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that number can be seen on sheet sixty-seven of the packet. And the reason I have it listed that way is because the DOT's share is that two-point-zero-seven-seven number. They will not exceed that number in any way at this, at this juncture. So that's why I have it as a minimum. If the wording needs to be changed, I'm all ears. But basically, what I'm looking for is the council approve, go in an agreement with WISDOT for this fifty-fifty cost share with DOT for this section of Fulton Street.
Okay. Questions?
Motion to approve State Municipal Flow Agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, ID, project ID thirty-nine five oh eight eight oh two five twelve, West Fulton Street to Harrison Street to Main Street, and a minimum of two million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars fifty cents.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Dykstra, second by Porczatsky. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan? Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. To next up, then, Justin, is the pedestrian bridge.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes. So this one is SMA number two. Again, referencing the map, it's shown as SMA two, just to keep it simplified. And this one is, again, through the Wisconsin DOT. This is the TAP Fund, or Transportation Alternatives Program. That ID is a little bit more standardized. You can see it and repeat it as you want. This is to replace the closed Pet Bridge. That Pet Bridge has been shut down for quite a long time. We've been trying for a number of years to come up with a good plan to replace it, come up with funding, and we feel like this one has finally stuck. This is an eighty-twenty cost share. And again, so that is just eligible construction items. So again, the planning and design is a hundred percent city. We would start that process along with Fulton Street, the one you just approved. We'd make it one larger city packet. The DOT would, I mean, it doesn't matter to them, because we are paying a hundred percent for the design of it. We'd just make it one longer connective corridor. Again, the eligible items are your standard construction. In this case, it's going to be more of a structural or a bridge type of project. There will be some sidewalks and some other amenities, such as grass and landscaping, that will be done. All in all, their share would be seven hundred, or nine hundred, excuse me, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Our twenty percent would be two hundred and forty-three thousand two twenty-five. And over the next four to five years, altogether, we'd expect to expense about five hundred thousand. And again, that includes a hundred percent of the design and planning. So SMA one, the Fulton Street project, and this one are budgeted within our capital. You've seen it. You will be reviewing that and have the potential to approve that in the coming months. This one is a year behind Fulton Street. It's just so we can spread out, multiple reasons, spread out the construction, spread out the borrow funds. And again, this one has a sunset year that, which is a little further off, but will still allow us to complete this project, give us a little buffer in case we have to delay it. A part of this, the replacement of the bridge will go from Schwen, Lions Park, up to the High Bank near Bank First. That's what we have in our River View Park Plan?
It's technically called the Riverfront Plan.
Riverfront. I'm sorry. Trying to get an assist from Park and Rec and she's ignoring me.
You can't say that out loud now.
Sorry. I'm trying. I am not successful. So that's in the plan to span that. And that property is now under the control of Bank First. We have a letter from them saying that we'll cooperate with helping us, I guess, with the land acquisition and help this project be a reality. I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth again, so I'll just ask for...
Okay. And so you were asking, you said our share would be the two forty-three, two twenty-five, but you're asking for a minimum of two fifty-eight, two twenty-five. Correct?
Correct. Let's see. Yep. So the two fifty-eight, two twenty-five is listed in the SMA agreement. So that's the minimum amount we're going to have to fund through the DOT project.
Okay. So the two forty-three, two twenty-five was our share of the construction, and then a plus fifteen thousand for the design work gets us to the two fifty-eight, two twenty-five.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Questions?
Do the costs that we're talking about include the removal of the old?
Correct. Yes, it does.
Same question? Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. So we haven't really talked about necessarily, you know, our share is the two fifty-eight, two twenty-five. That's, that would be the city's responsibility. We have not talked about how we'll come up with that funding, but that will be in the future, as Justin has talked about. But this is just looking at approving this eighty-twenty project with, with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Hope I didn't confuse you. What I'm trying to say is that, you know, this is something that we feel like the community is going to get behind, and so that we feel like we're going to get some support from the city.
Is there a time limit on this?
There is.
There is, and then I did not list that. The sunset date is June thirtieth of 2030.
Would you anticipate the new, quote, new bridge where it is now, or where the previous design would have it downstream a little further? Just an early question.
Where it is now, but from Schwen, Lions Park, up to the high, higher ground next to Bank First. So not...
Not in the park.
Yeah. Not on the east side of Cooper, but spanning over Cooper Street.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve SMA number two.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dykstra, that we approve what Justin is calling SMA two, which is an agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the Pet Branch for a minimum cost two hundred and fifty-eight thousand two twenty-five. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan? Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. And then you got one more.
Okay. Thank you much. So the last one is, again, a Fulton Street project. This one is not so much on our radar, but has, but will be now. So this one, the DOT requested a meeting with myself and Aaron to talk about this project. And to be honest, we went into it not really sure what to expect, and we came out where they wanted to complete this project. They want to start the design on it, and with the anticipation of a potential construction in 2033 or 2034. So we're, you know, a good ten years away from this section being rebuilt. We all know it is needed. We've done a lot of patching in here. This SMA would be for just the design, and DOT would do all the design work, and we would just have to give our share, which would be twenty-five percent of the design work. It will address the signals that are there, so it's something that we've talked about a number of times.
A number of times.
It will look at the intersection of Hillcrest and Fulton. And all in all, it will basically renew the pavement sections that are there. I don't know what else I'm missing, but...
So it's going to take, it will take us from Western Avenue to Harrison Street if this project, that's what the design is going to be.
Correct. Yes. Thanks for the assist. So the limits of it, we'll start at Western Avenue, go to Harrison Street, and then up Harrison to North Street. This is State Highway forty-nine, or a section of connecting highway. And we are typically on the hook for a hundred percent of the maintenance. Now that the state has a little bit more funding, and also it is reaching that point where a major replacement is warranted, they are stepping up and taking care of that replacement. So it is a very good deal, because typically, many who are on council, I think back in thirteen or fourteen, where a section of this by the signals was repaved, and then it started cracking like not much, like a few years later. So recognizing that those cracks are still there, many others are there, the signals are delinquent or inadequate, I should say. There are some issues with pedestrian movements. They're coming in and they're going to complete the design of this. This one, we have not planned for at all financially. It is to the tune of fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. I was told that that cost would be spread out over multiple years. So I get the feeling that it's, it's not going to be a one year, we have to borrow fifty-eight thousand dollars. It'll be much more like on the range of closer to five years, something where we will get a better gauge on in the next couple of months and have that ready for you, and I guess in the budget approval process, to the point where we may be able, just to handle it within our maintenance budgets over the years. So it's, it's something that will be a smaller expense over a spread-out term. So again, just looking for approval of this SMA. And this one is strictly just for design, where the DOT will be doing the design and covering seventy-five percent of the cost. We will cover twenty-five percent. And then construction at right now would be zero percent, with the exception is if we ask for non-standard construction items.
Okay. So again, this is something, even though it's ten years old, it's something that we've been looking for, for a long, long time. So Colin, you had a question?
Yeah, I wanted a little clarification. This, this amount is, is just for the design part of, of this project. And you're saying a quarter of that design would be fifty-eight five, which is to say they'd be able to design the whole thing for two hundred and thirty, four times that, or two hundred and thirty-four thousand approximately. Is there any way we have any sort of say over limiting that design number to say, hey, you, you can't go above that? I mean, we're saying we're going to give them a minimum of fifty-eight five, but we don't really control their design process, so we can't really control that number. And as you mentioned, I, I think this is an important thing for us to do, and I'm all for it, but with our, our last week's, or two weeks ago, capital improvement plan, we're kind of in a position where we're, things are really tight for everybody. So I guess my question is, can, is this design number feasible to design that project for that little amount of money? And can we control it or have some sort of input so we don't get in trouble if this design has to be done before we can pay for it through a capital improvement plan number?
Well, typically, we can't tell them what to do, because they're the state. But it is, it is a state municipal agreement. So these numbers, they were created by the DOT, and they feel pretty confident, like that's what they're going to hit. So, and I, you know, I, I believe them. I think that that is their design effort. It's done in-house, so they're more efficient with their dollars than, I guess, hiring out. Being that this is potentially going to be spread out over multiple years, I would like to say ten, but I doubt it's going to take that long to design it. It feels like we should find a way to afford it, especially when we have, right now, a zero percent cost share on the construction, which is going to be three to four million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other question?
Yeah, I have one here. Is there any way that they could actually push that design study out to incorporate the Walgreens Pick 'n Save entrance? If they could get, you know, possibly signal lights there? There's a lot of traffic that's coming out of McDonald's, it's really putting a heavy traffic load at Southwestern and Fulton Street. They could incorporate that out in a little bit farther, do the traffic studies out that far? I live right there. It's horrible.
Right. Um, no. Again, w- we don't tell the state what to do. However, um, the, in our first conversation, there was a few ideas we threw out there that was outside of these project limits and they seemed to be open to listen. So, um, I would say there's, there's a possibility of, uh, of extending, uh, the project limits. But right now, as the agreement stands, it's, uh, Western Avenue to North Street. So. We certainly can make that request, but I'm, can't guarantee they're gonna oblige to it.
If, would this have any redundancy with our moving of the water and stuff on the corner of Hillcrest and Fulton?
Will be.
Is there overlapping that we have to be concerned about?
Yes. Yes, and, uh, obviously, that's in, uh, the back of my mind. And when we move forward with this project and what we've talked about on that corner, that's something we'll be considering, uh, and planning for.
Okay, anybody else? Eric, I, I know you didn't get the answer you wanted. We all know that that pork chop, as they call it, is a, is an issue coming out of Pick 'n Save and Walgreens. I wish there was an easy answer to it, but it doesn't seem to be.
Now, that takes that option out?
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think it's eliminated altogether. Um. I'm just recommending not passing up this opportunity. And I think we go with this now. We, we can, along the lines, ask them to continue to look at that.
I guess one thing looking at it too, if the turn signals go back at Fulton and Western Avenue, that would improve traffic flow.
Yes.
Right now, it's ridiculous.
Yep. In that, so the signals are included in the design and study. That's a hundred percent construction on them, twenty-five percent design on us. And they will do a traffic study according to their standards. And if it warrants, uh, those signals staying there and putting, including the turn lanes, then that's what they will do. I'm assuming it will be there, 'cause the traffic counts are well over ten thousand a day. And so, a signal will be warranted, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment. Eric, I think to answer your question, absolutely not. It doesn't mean that we couldn't do that. I would say that I agree with Justin and the fact that, I know he's hesitant to say that they'll take a look at that, especially with their funding. They may. I think they do wanna know locally what we feel like is gonna impact that area. And like Justin said, we'll bring it up and who knows what comes of it? Or it's a scenario in which they're like, well, we don't feel like it really is gonna warrant DOT funding, but locally, if you feel like that's an issue, you can consider funding that part of the design, which might be a little more. Those are like just unknowns. Long story short, um, this, approving this tonight doesn't, doesn't take away that at all. Um, but I think it's a, it's a good thing to consider.
Okay. Uh, Colin, go ahead.
I guess I, I asked this question to, um, um, Mayor, or maybe Aaron, or maybe even Stephanie. Uh, can we come up with this money, uh, to do this project?
Yes, without a doubt, yes.
Okay. I motioned to approve the SMA with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for Fulton to Harrison, uh, to cover a minimum of fifty-eight-five.
Second?
So, we have a motion by Dijkstra, second by Martin, that we approve of this agreement? Any further discussion? Barbara caller roll?
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Again, aye.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Does he get two votes?
I did it again.
Cool.
Um. Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
What am I missing?
Somebody not vote Olson?
Olson, Eric Olson.
Aye.
Sorry. Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Uh, okay, next up. Sorry, Barb. That's okay, you did good. Uh, next up, you did good for your first day. Next up, we have, uh, ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty-four. This is an ordinance amending chapter nine point zero seven offenses upon school property. Chapter nine point two-two possession of used tobacco and vape, uh, products prohibited. Penalties in chapter nine point two-three restrictions on sale of gift of cigarettes or tobacco vapor products. This is a first reading of that ordinance and Brian, your name's on this, so.
Yes, um, vape products have act, you know, they've become a, a big thing now and our ordinances did not cover that. So, we had to go back and for us to, um, issue citations for law enforcement, uh, we had to add the vapor products alongside the tobacco products for us to do enforcement actions with that. And that way, that's just gonna ensure that all forms of nicotine consumption are regulated, so allows us to write the citations. So, it's just the additions of vapor products in the ordinances.
All right. Good, again, this is just the first reading, so you'll see this at our next meeting. Thank you, Chief. What's that? Oh, Colin, you got a question?
Would this allow you to enforce this at the high school? Or is that not your?
Well, this is the main part, is the high school.
So, you're allowed?
We're allowed.
City is allowed to enforce?
Yes, we are during, during school hours. We're, before, we were covering it just under, um, the beginning of the school violations offenses upon school property. And we're allowed to write it in that way, but this way, we're just more consistent.
So, I, okay, I, I guess I was, I want, like, I think technically the school is not in the city of all packages.
It isn't, but during school hours, that's our enforcement area.
All right, terrific, thank you.
All right, uh, again, that was the first reading. License report number sixteen eighty-eight. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. I couldn't see your hand.
Uh, I just was wondering, while we're doing this, should we include, uh, nicotine pouches also?
It's under, um, vic- or under vapor products, that does, um, include that. So, it's, um, that includes all the, you know, if there's skull bandits or whatever it may be, that's already included in the tobacco.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, next up, uh, license report number sixteen eighty-eight. This is a scrap dealer's license. Uh, you can find that on page ninety-three. Uh, we would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve license report sixteen eighty-eight. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Say no. Uh, next up is license report number sixteen eighty-nine, which is on page ninety-four. These are bartender's license. Uh, again, they, they need, uh, approval of background checks and all of that. Once those are done and you approve those, uh, they would be able to get their operator's license. Need a motion to approve.
Approve.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve, uh, license report number sixteen eighty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no. Motion carried. All right, uh, communications recommendations of the mayor. The only thing I have tonight is just, right after this, don't forget, we do have a, uh, committee of the whole meeting to talk about transit and TIFs. Um, so, I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hagan. The neighbors are gonna be fighting. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, we're adjourned at, uh, six fifty-nine PM. Let's, uh, give Aaron about seven minutes and fifteen seconds to get ready and then we'll go.
An increase about a year ago, uh, to offset some inc- some anticipated increased costs. You'll see in here, we're not going to recommend increasing resident fares. However, in, in a month or so, you may see us come forward with a suggestion to increase agency fares. Agency fares, uh, we do have some room to go up. And agency fares would be, um, like Lakeland or, uh, healthcare organizations that purchase usually large quantities at a time. Uh, those are one of our most inconsistent revenues to project. And you'll see some kind of variances and, and maybe some unbalanced budgets that we're gonna talk about. And it's because it's just hard to project when they're gonna have those large inflows of ticket purchases. So, right now, and really dating back a long, long time, we have budgeted a ten thousand dollar contribution out of the general fund. The, the cost of this program is actually over six hundred thousand dollars. But a, a large part of that is covered by the, the, uh, fifty-three eleven funds. And then another large part of it is covered by the actual fares, uh, the revenue that comes in through the usership. And then the city, uh, does budget annually ten thousand dollars to offset any costs that those two large revenue products do not cover. We have been able to add to our general fund balance over the last couple of years in large part due to some ARPA money that has been stuck with that fifty-three eleven program that existed for a couple of years. Uh, so, we'll get into that too. Here on page four, you can see a little snapshot of the transit fund. This is a summary page. Um, and you can see our fund balance currently is at about forty-one thousand dollars. There is no real reason to hold a fund balance in this, other than to offset years that we may have a little less revenue through ridership, um, which we are actually potentially, um, projecting in these budgets. So, you can see right now that, uh, because we have not had purchases, large purchases from agency fares in two thousand and twenty-four, we're trending down on that. However, we very well could get a large purchase in November, December, January. Um, and if we don't get that, we will very likely have a large purchase after the first of the year, sometime in two thousand and twenty-five. So, because those are kind of inconsistent, we don't build those in. Um, this is basically, uh, projections based off of regular ridership. And you can see that we are projecting dipping into fund balance some here, um, over the next couple of years. If that held true, we potentially in two thousand and twenty-five, potentially, and I'm not necessarily s- ex- um, expecting this, I, I am expecting that we can cover it with just a ten thousand dollar budgeted amount. But you can see, you know, in kind of a very conservative worst-case scenario, uh, we could be dipping into it as much as, uh, an additional twenty thousand on top of that ten. This is something we'll just keep a close eye on as we move throughout the next couple of years. And the thing that I would probably be most concerned about is if that becomes a trend over time and all of a sudden the general fund is expected to subsidize it regularly at thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars, um, you know, five years out, well, then we'll need to kinda talk about what other ways, uh, are there to mitigate that? You know, what's the value, so on and so forth? Again, there is a very, there's a great value to it, given that the total cost of the program's over six hundred thousand dollars and right now, the city is only budgeting for ten thousand dollars out of the general fund. So, that is how that looks. Are there any questions? There's a little more detail in this transit fund worksheet, uh, you can see. There's a couple, there are a couple other small revenue lines from the Veterans Home that has dwindled over time because they've really moved from a, you know, a little more of a long-term care facility to an end-of-life care facility, um, in which, uh, our revenues and, and trips have, have gone down over time. That's reflected here. And then there's just some other general fund or general, uh, budget items. But we are not, uh, projecting a, a capital equipment purchase this year and, or in two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we would be looking at likely a capital equipment purchase in two thousand and twenty-six, which means an upgraded van. Be happy to answer any questions with the two thousand and twenty-five transit fund, uh, worksheets as it stands today. There aren't any questions? Mayor, you good with me moving to TIF?
Yeah, let's go to the TIFs.
Okay. Um, all right, so, next, uh, city council members, is a kind of a summary of our, this is very similar to what we saw on the joint review board in June. And this is a summary of all our TIFs. This is what most of you already know. It's just an executive summary of what TIFs exist, where they're located, how they're titled. If you haven't read that, go ahead, take a look. But a lot of that is also gonna be what we go over here and we'll start kind of on page, we'll start here. Uh, page ten. This is just in general overview and a map of where these TIDs are located. Uh, and these TIDs obviously have the geographical boundaries, um, which you can see there. Um, I'm gonna start left to right, tid four, uh, which is overlaid over like the McDonald's. We call it the Western Avenue TIF. That is in blue. Uh, and then moving east, we have the yellow, uh, which is tid ten. Um, that is downtown. We're currently just e- entered into a development agreement and then amended a development agreement at tid ten. Uh, moving further east, very, very small there, purple, that is the Churchill Street tid. That's, uh, one of the newer two. Uh, we do not have any activity in there now. We have had some interest, have had some, um, recent meetings on that, actually. Um, but nothing to the point where we could bring forward for consideration to city council. Uh, and then continuing to move east, we of course have, uh, tid eleven in the red, which is River North. Uh, I think you're all familiar with the activity there. And then tid eight, which is our distressed tid, um, and I call it the East Gate tid. And that is, um, you know, right now, projecting to be paid off in two thousand and thirty-three, two thousand and thirty-four, depending on how things go. So, we'll go over each of them just a little bit. Um, tid four, it was created in two thousand. The incremental value is currently forty, over forty million, almost forty-one million, or fourteen times its base value. The plan's been amended a couple of times, but right now, the primary purpose of tid four is to pay off tid eight. Um, it was a donor, uh, did kinda make the downtown incentive program possible, um, in tid ten. Um, but again, right now, uh, it is only open to help pay the debt, uh, and transfer and donate money to tid eight until it can pay back the sewer fund, the water fund, and the debt service fund. Tid four, that's one of our, uh, more successful TIDs. Uh, the other one is actually, I would say that kind of, well, this is, was our most successful tid. The other one actually that was rivaled this was tid six, which was Foxfire, and that closed, uh, just a couple of years back. Tid eight, the, again, this is our distressed tid, uh, the East Gate tid. We've talked a lot about, uh, this when we talked about capital, because this tid and its contributions to the debt service fund help offset what we need to levy over the next several years, because it owes the debt service fund money, um, from the early two thousands. Uh, right now, we are going to get very aggressive in paying back the water utility first, uh, because the water utility is in good financial shape. But, um, when compared to the sewer utility, um, it could use it a little more. Also, um, tid eight, or, uh, the water utility is governed, uh, and, uh, by the PSC or the Public Service Commission, um, which there are requirements that come with that. So, we're gonna get very aggressive over the next couple of years and we'll show you that to the water utility. Uh, the next is the debt service fund, which we talked about, when we talked about the capital plan. And then the other one is, uh, the sewer fund. We are unsure if tid eight will be able to pay the entire balance of the sewer fund right by the time it closes in two thousand and thirty-three or two thousand and thirty-four. It will be very close. Um, we'll just have to keep an eye on that as we, as we go throughout the years here. Tid ten, uh, again, uh, really, the only activity in this right now is the, uh, Saint, uh, I keep calling it Saint, old Saint Mary's. But I should refer to it as the Development Agreement with Shulkey Properties for the thirty-unit apartment complex. for the thirty-unit apartment complex of market rate apartments, um, that we are in with them. That, to make that happen, uh, the, that was, uh, also a donation, um, upfront from TID four to TID ten to make a payment to the developer possible. Um, the pro forma has it recovering all those costs, paying back TID four for that transfer, uh, and having money left in it at the end of that TID. It's TID's life, which would be two thousand and twenty-nine. TID eleven, this is River North. Uh, you are all familiar with the current things happening, uh, with Tykor. Again, we've talked a lot about Tykor and the single-family housing and the thirty-two new homes we expect to be there. Also with the, uh, or I'm sorry, the thirty-five single-family homes as a part of phase one. Also, uh, with the a hundred and twenty, uh, four apartment units that we're working towards starting. What we haven't talked a lot about, uh, is the WIDA tax credit project that's also happening out there with Mosaic. And obviously if you drive out there right now, you can see, um, those rooftops going up very quickly. So those, we should have a lot of those online by November. TID twelve, again, this is the inactive, uh, I shouldn't, it's active, but, uh, hasn't had any development agreements brought to date. This is one of our newer TIDs that is a smaller geographical TID. We hope to have something in here in the near future. So there are a couple of things before we get into kind of the details and the fund worksheets. I did wanna talk about some legislation that happened, um, in two thousand and twenty-three. We've talked a lot about the shared revenue bill, how that's impacted our general fund. Um, some of the really good things about it, some of the things that maybe there's things left to be desired about that bill. We haven't talked about its impact on TIDs. I think the only way, the only place I have talked about that so far was the joint review board meeting. But there was some kind of gives and takes when that got passed and that bill got passed. Uh, and one of them was, um, impacts to TIDs. Those, the impacts don't impact any of our TIDs that exist today, um, because they were all created prior to this happening. However, if we were to create a new TID, um, after September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, there are some different rules. Uh, and those, the differences are that instead of, right now in our TIDs, we can realize and we can count a hundred percent of the net new construction that's created in that TID towards our net new construction or towards levy limit. So that helps municipalities continue to fund the operations. That is changing with these newly created TIDs. They'll be reduced to ninety percent, um, of new construction, not net new construction. So that is one, that's, that's a fairly negligible, um, difference. The larger difference will be, um, the second bullet point there. And that is when a TID closes, you have a one-time adjustment, uh, that can help your, uh, it, it can help, uh, increase your levy limit calculation in that year. And that currently, any of our TIDs that exist right now, you can use fifty percent of that value that goes back on the tax rolls to adjust your levy limit up and help support your services. In the future, if we were to create a TID next year, let's say, which by the way, we're not able to because we're over the twelve percent mark, just barely, um, that new TID when it closed in twenty years or thirty years, um, would not be able to realize fifty percent in that one-time adjustment. It would only be able to realize ten percent. So that's, that's a large, large difference. And if we do, or if we have the opportunity to, um, discuss a potential TID opening in the future, we'll have to talk about this, kind of play that out. How would that have impacted, uh, past TIDs that we had and how would that make things look different? And we'll have to consider all that when we make those decisions. So those are two big changes. Again, not anything that's gonna impact us in the, in the near future. However, things to keep in our mind. And the reality is, is could things change between now and two thousand and thirty-three or thirty-four when we're looking at that again? It's possible, but that's how it stands today. Um, these, so what we have here is I just have listed, you guys have seen these a million times, these pro formas. These are just the most updated pro formas for each of the TIDs, starting with TID four and then a budget worksheet, uh, for each of those. And I'll just take a look, just so you guys, I don't, I won't need to, unless you guys want to, um, don't need to go through each of the detail on all of these. But I, I will explain kind of what each line item is here on one. So this is TID four, general property taxes. This is what comes in as a revenue each year annually, uh, through the TID. There is a small computer aid, uh, that is actually, um, going away, uh, because of some of the new legislation as well. And then we do have expenditures for, um, professional services. We do have expenditures actually to the general fund. You can see transfers to the general fund. So TIDs do help offset expenses in the general fund. The justification for that is, let's take TIF eleven, for example, which is our highest. TIF eleven actually gives, we're projecting, given about thirty thousand dollars to the general fund. That's because it helps offset administrative costs, staff costs. I mean, we spend a lot of time, um, in, and when I say we, I mean, a number of department heads, um, the mayor, myself, on putting together, uh, proposals, uh, within TID eleven, uh, which is the justification, uh, for that transfer. You can see here, I mentioned the aggressive approach. Transferring from TIF four to TIF eight, you can see next year one point four million, followed by seven hundred forty thousand and then seven hundred thousand. And that is for TIF eight to get more, more aggressive, to pay off that water utility. And then you can see, um, how that kind of goes throughout the next several years until TID eight is projected to close. So within all of those not, within all those numbers, our transfers that goes to TIF eight and then from TIF eight, it goes to water utility, sewer utility and debt service. And then transfer to TIF ten, that has actually happened in the past. We have no more projected. Uh, could probably remove that line item from the worksheet. So that's just an example of, uh, let's, and then you can see the fund balance at the end. Um, and this one is projected to zero out, uh, at the end because it is projected to pay back everything for TIF eight. Um, if you would like, I can go through all of them in that same detail, but, um, I also can just kinda, we have gone through all these a number of times. Really, nothing has changed specifically and, um, I'm happy to open it up for questions. You have, Colin?
And the revenues for, uh, TID four? This top, the first number is seven ninety-one that drops to six eighty-nine. Why, why the large decrease?
Yes, that's a great question. And the answer is we can't, that is an imperfect projection. And the reason it's imperfect is because when we do the TIF calculation worksheet, that's the DOR puts out every year. It basically charges or levies through the, through each, um, TIF district at a percentage, depending on how much value is in that TIF district. So we're projecting that there's gonna be more value in TID eleven because we have a lot of active projects in TID eleven. So that one may go up and this one may go down proportionally, if that helps.
Okay.
Any other questions? Aaron, thank you.
Aaron, thank you. Um, yeah, and as always, if you have any questions between now and, uh, final budget, just let me know.
All right. Anybody else have anything for this, we did the whole meeting? If not, uh, we'd be looking for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Olson. Second by, is he still there? Hagan?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, second by Hagan. Uh, to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no. Motion carried. We are adjourned from the committee hall at seven twenty-seven PM. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.